Good morning, everybody. I hope everybody had a thrilling, exciting holiday weekend. Glad to see all you family, older beach ponies here today, or staff thrilled to be here. We're all happy to be survivors of the weekend. I'm going to officially call the meeting to order, and second item on the agenda is public comment. Anybody want to... has anybody signed up?
Yes, sir.
Nobody signed up. Number three, discussion of possible action from Block Q. Mayor Bruce Tim Smith, you're up, sir.
Well, we have... Block Q now has been cleared and mowed and roped off. I just want to say, there's no need to let that property just sit. I know we have to... What we want to do today is request that we put out a RFQ, or RFP, whichever you want to call it, to allow us to move forward with a master plan for what we were going to do ultimately with that property. David, can you fill us in on what we need to do to get that process started?
Short version is, is direct me to develop an RFQ and advertise it for firms interested in providing that type of service to us. Just direct me to do it, and then...
Does that take a motion and a vote, or can we just resolve it as a...
It would be appropriate for y'all to, and especially for the clerk, to record it that, for the record, that you are pursuing a request for qualifications for the development of a master plan, to bring that back. And then, basically, when those come back in, it will come back before the board for the selection of the firm.
Is that possible, to get that done before we have our meeting in coming first?
Maybe, probably, depending on what type of response we get back. And I'm assuming we need to at least have it out on the street for two weeks. Don't know if that marries up with the clerk's requirement for materials in the agenda packages or not, but, you know, we can put it out there and see if it makes it one time.
David, we've gone back and forth on this a couple times between the RFQ and the RFP, and I thought the last time you were proposing it was an RFP, not an RFQ. I'm just... The definition between the two.
Well, the request for qualifications, since this is going to a public facility, a public facility that would need engineering and architects on it, those by statute are defined as selected on qualifications based. So that's why the term request for qualifications, because we'll solicit engineering services based on qualifications, and then y'all would make that selection. A request for proposals is normally a... When you're buying a commodity. So it's an issue of semantics, that the dividing line is engineering services versus commodities. This is kind of the way I interpret it.
Okay. And just to remind everybody, a request for qualifications does not include any sort of cost estimate, right?
Qualifications, engineering, architects selections are based on qualifications.
Thank you.
How can we get the pricing part of that, David, once we qualify?
Once you qualify, then they'll make a proposal for the...
Can that not be done simultaneously?
Nope. Can't do it.
All right, then I'd like to make a motion that we request an RFQ for Block Q in the area, and whatever associated permits and so forth we have to get, we get that ball rolling also.
You have a second?
I'll second.
First question I'd ask, David, does that motion cover everything that we would need?
Mr. Smith got close to it when he said permits and associated items. If there are particular things that you would like addressed, it would probably help me out, or the staff out, in crafting the ask for what goes into the qualifications. What are we asking for? We want to do a master site plan, identifying elements, and...
Stormwater, all of the came up theme of whatever permits that are required to develop that piece of property.
To include cost elements, forecast cost elements. Basically, what I'm getting in front of the board is you want to suit the nuts, a master plan that includes site, cost, all the elements involved, that they can predicate budget and construction estimates on. Is that... Tim, you got anything?
All that's going to be required, it needs to reference that our requirements and school board, we present something that we are not expecting from school board, how the town requires it to specify. So it needs to reflect what we require in our board.
Exactly.
Would you like to modify the motion?
Modify the motion to include all of those elements for the stormwater permit and came up, and everything is involved in the development of that master plan.
You agree, Mr. Bryan?
I just want to, you know, if you didn't see this weekend, we short some boat trailer parking, you didn't see it, but we are, and that's a big reason why we pushed to get this property so...
Okay, I'm trying to get a second here.
I'll give you a second.
All right, you agree. Now go ahead and discuss.
All right, so do we need to break it down that far? Is that kind of general consensus, that's the way we're going?
The motion's good now.
That's fine.
Mr. Pat, you got anything you have to talk about?
Nope.
I'm going to call for the question, or the vote, rather. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. unanimous, Madam Clerk?
Now, there's still more discussion on that area, as Brian just alluded to. You know, it's a shame to let a property that we purchased and cleared somewhat not be utilized in some way, as not to interfere with the master plan, but to be able to utilize some of that property for boat parking.
Temporarily.
Temporary parking.
If there's any way we could do something temporary where it's to not affect the process going forward of getting the master plan done, if there's something we can put in temporary, we put up rope, and we blocked it off. Is there any possible way that we could get 15 or 20 organized boat and trailer parking spaces in that area temporarily without violating any... And that's a question for Tim, probably, but that's... To keep the stormwater less than acre, and I don't know if that applies, there are separate lots. Is there any way we could do one lot or two lots temporarily, knowing that we would comply in the end with the entire thing, or...
Well, development is development. It would be no different than subdivision, if you both can have 100 lots in, you're only going to work on one lot, you still have to have a school board planning for the development. If you have seven lots, you're only going to work on one, it would be the same thing. If you do decide to break it down under an acre, and say that's all you're ever going to develop, then you've still got to continue to town school board, and to do those kinds of things. But if we've gone from parking in the right of ways, to now parking on this lot, I mean, I guess this would be a question more for maybe the attorney to look at the rules and regulations that comes to that conclusion, but all I can do is go by what I read, and I don't see...
I don't see whether there's any leadway for that. I would hate to make a suggestion. I mean, we didn't have all this boat parking before we had paid parking. What we had was boats in the right of way. Why not just exempt those right of way areas until you can get the property open? Why not exempt those areas where they were already parked?
What do you mean exempt?
Well, they were all... Nobody was parking on these lots, as I'm aware of. I used to come over here on the weekends. They were all parking in the right of ways where you're now charging.
We're not talking about exempting charging for boats. We're just talking about having areas where the boaters have... I believe we're talking about identifying areas where the boaters have... It's designated for boaters, and it's not that it's a if cars are already there. Am I correct?
Just more organized, because over Memorial Day weekend, it wasn't just boats and trailers, it was boat and trailer, and then a car, and another boat and trailer, and then a couple cars, and it was not organized. I'm talking about if you... And I know there's probably an ordinance change that has to be done with the parking or whatever, to actually designate spaces for boats and trailers only, and make it clear that that's where, that's our boat and trailer parking spaces, and just a temporary thing for the summer, to give them where a car's not going to park there. And if they do park there, they're going to have to pay the whole freight. But I'm just tossing ideas out there. If we put diagonals parking spaces, say, off of Carolina, and I don't think that little strip between South Shore, it might be big enough for a few boats, but I think it'd be just as well off parking around it, like we do now. And if parking around this, if parking around Block Q's the only thing we can do right now, then that's the only thing we can do. I mean, that's case closed. I'm just asking if there's a temporary solution where we could provide, I don't know, 20 more boat and trailer spaces for the summer, without messing up the master plan, so to speak, or whatever the vision is to do with the property. But I know at least part of the vision, in my opinion, was to use it for boat and trailer parking. So until it takes time to close Carolina Avenue, until all that's done and in place, if there's just something we could do temporary, just for the summer, just put two or three loads of gravel, because if they get off in that dead sand for a couple times, they're stuck. So we would have to put some gravel down, or something, marble, or just something temporary. If we can't do it, we can't do it.
Without disturbing the natural lay of the land. We're not going to change the land. We're not going to grade it or clear it. Just add a pervious stone or material to it to allow us to park just either diagonally along Carolina, or as we saw the boats that were ticketed, you know, a lot of not this weekend, weekend before, we laid back the boats straight in, basically put the trailer in the block queue, and the front of the boat was beside the parking sign. So, you know, we don't want to disturb the property, change the property, just add a material to the top of it that is pervious, that would not cause any... shouldn't cause any stormwater issues, or it's basically the same thing, it's just got some, a different coating on the top of it, and the water still goes through, it moves the way it always has.
I'd like to comment on that. I would caution the board, I understand on wanting to make a showing as soon as you can on this, but I would caution the board as to the appearance of the action that you're contemplating there, because of the perception of incrementally developing that property. Mr. Evans battles daily on a per lot basis with these exact same issues with stormwater. And what you're contemplating is basically the same thing on the large scale, and if anybody needs to set the example on developmental practices, the town needs to do that. I think that putting material out there, when we know as a matter of record that that whole site will be developed at some point in time, is a bad example. And I think that we need to push the clutch in on this motor, go through the formal process. You have paid parking set up, let that work, it's better than it was last year, and go through and do it the right way. This is going to make things difficult, and there's enough controversy on implementing paid parking already, without complicating the matter over discourse about the legality of that, and I think that's what we're doing.
So is the answer no to the question?
If you're asking...
If you say no, just say no.
Well, it would be no different than any land disturbing activity on any other site in the town. It would require a prepared erosion and sanitation control plan, because it's less than an acre, and it would have to describe the temporary and permanent control measures. In other words, you would have to have a plan. I mean, it goes on and on. I mean, it's actually there, it talks about being able to make sure that we don't put unnecessary water flow onto adjacent roads, and into adjacent neighborhoods, and onto adjacent neighbors. The ordinance is there for a definitive reason. We know we have stormwater issues in that particular area. We've had numerous complaints on Carolina Avenue about flooding of homes. We even dealt with it when we repaved Brunswick Avenue West, as it being in effect all the way down there. So you would make it... We require those things because it's in the best interest of life, safety, and the public health and welfare, and as I understand, for a temporary measure. But let me say something I've said probably thousands of times in my career, when it comes to construction, and development, and anything else like that. There is never anything so permanent as something temporary. And so I would caution y'all to try to exclude yourselves from the very requirements that we are over there asking everyone else to comply with, and if they don't, then we firmly ask them to comply with the penalty. So my suggestion is, is that while you're doing an RFQ, if you intend to do less than an acre, then you're basically spending taxpayers' money. You're going to have to develop a plan just for the temporary stuff, because it's still land disturbing activity. You're going to be double whammying the taxpayers with an expense that you're already undertaking to do. And I understand, I would... I use the boat ramp, I understand, I totally understand. But at the same time, from a planning standpoint, many times, we don't get to engage, but let me engage in this, there are no less parking places over there now than there was before we bought it. And trying to give relief is admirable in its best intent, but to violate a rule that you're asking your staff to enforce every day, or to bend the rule, or to tiptoe around it, is predicated to lending us no credibility at all in our department. So I ask, I beg you, that if you intend to do anything over there, then at least try to follow the development ordinance as it's written. And if that takes time, whatever that time may be, then let's do it.
So with our motion to ask David to move forward with an RFQ, and associated permits to stormwater would be part of that, David?
Absolutely.
And that, could that be...
Well, now...
Put at the top of the list?
The plan will outline for you what that site will be. You will have to approve the plan first, before we move into a construction mode, which will require permitting and construction. So until the board approves the plan, you're not going to be able to go undertake any permitting activities.
And at the same time, you can do it in phases, as long as your plan describes the phases. So if your intent is to see how quickly you can get X amount of whatever, then your master plan can have phases, and those phases can be addressed. But you're going to need, you're going to have, you're going to end up with an operational agreement and all kinds of other stuff because of the stormwater. And if you choose to go with an acre, and you're actually developing a whole acre, then you may develop an acre that then ends up having to be redone, because it doesn't match the other six lots, or however many lots are there. In other words, when you decide to close the road, you may end up having to redo your plan altogether, because you've already developed an acre that doesn't match what you're going to do. So you could do it in phases, one plan, phases. That's done a lot.
Okay.
Whatever's in the best interest of the town, I mean, that's what we want to do. I just, my question was, I don't, I just wanted to know if we could do something temporary for the summer. I believe I got a clear answer, so that's all I was asking.
That's fine. I'll add to that, this type of approach is going to carry out one of the board's goals and objectives this year, that provides for doing that very same thing, is getting cost on different elements of these improvements, and going toward a capital plan approach on construction of those items. So, I mean, it matches up with your stated goals.
David, at what time do we want, or what time can we have some public input as to the total plan itself? I know there's going to be parking, do we want to have some other elements there on that property? At what point do we ask for that public input?
You can either do it as part of the board consideration in the public forum on consideration of approval for the master plan, or you could have me to put in the RFQ that a component of public input be carried out by the consultant. For example, when we did the Parks and Rec master plan, there were actually a number of charrettes that were conducted, surveys, that kind of thing. So if that's the type of thing the board, you have an option there. Do y'all want to wait and let the consultant base their elements and the master site plan on their review of literature and different board meetings? Or would you prefer to have the public participate as part of the process before it gets to the board? You can tell me to do whichever way you want to.
Well, David, I think it's important, as we have discussed individually, this is our chance to let the public be part of this development, and there's no need to develop a master plan that have to come back, and they say, well, no, we don't want this, we'd rather have this. I think the public input via the Parks and Rec, with Christie's assistance, would be the, I think, the best way to develop the plan. That way, when we finish it, you know, it's not just us five board members, it is the community as well, that has input into the final design. And that way, we'll, again, in phases, we'll start with a parking area first, and then there'll be some other amenities, I feel sure, that we can use on that property. There's a lot of good ideas I've been approached with, and my fellow commissioners have mentioned some amenities there on that property that would... Key, I would, doesn't, oh, it doesn't need to be full of parking places. We don't need that. We don't need 200 done parking places.
To that point, if I may ask, does the board envision making the selection of the engineering firm at its level? How would you like it executed? Do you want the Parks and Rec Advisory Board to review the master plan, since many of those elements are going to be recreation based? Do you want it to be reviewed and work the rec board into the process, or just how do you want, how do you envision that? Because I can craft that into the RFQ, too.
I prefer the board deal with it.
The board of commissioners?
The board of commissioners deal with it, personally.
Are we done with that, lady? Through discussion, or you want to discuss more?
I think that's about all we can discuss on Block Q. Just as a, maybe as a side note, the property that is across the street here, that we were going to try to get developed by Memorial Day, is that still, I think the stormwater work has been done on it, and we could put some pervious material in and use it for parking.
Is that the corner over there?
Yes, sir.
There's no pervious...
Put some gravel on it, or some rocks off the beach on it.
It's done. It's been covered with sea biscuits, pretty much.
Can the sides be moved to the back of it, and maybe roped off the boundaries so people can...
We've done, we've done as much as we can do out there without a more formal approach. But it is suitable, it is suitable to be parked on.
Is it clear to people how they're supposed to park on it?
No, it's not. But we can give it some loving, I think, and...
Bumpers or something?
And make it, and make it right.
Because I think right now, people are just looking at it as, I don't know how they'll pull into it right now.
Yeah, we can give it some attention there.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we through with number three? Ready to go to number four, the pier?
Again, this is a property that was purchased, not to sit still. Our staff, both the town staff and our police staff, have both done a great job on getting that parking lot ready for this holiday weekend. They've got the flags put up, looks great. Everybody seemed to be parking in order. It was full every day. In fact, it's already filling up this morning. So we've done, we've done a lot. But as far as the property, are, have we, number one, finished up the campsites to where they can be utilized at this point?
I believe so. We've got the utilities set there. Electric has been repaired and inspected, upgraded. I think there's 350 amp, 330 amp boxes. Water lines are serviced for all of the sites, and the sewer clean out... and, uh, the, the sewer, um, clean outs have been inspected and are ready to receive flow. So the, the campsites are functional. Our limiting factor is how to administer. And, uh, uh, if the board wants to proceed, uh, with putting those into operation, we need to decide on a fee schedule and from the administrative side, how to, uh, handle, handle rentals.
Well, again, that was part of, uh, that was the second part of the, uh, the question was what does the board, what do we need to do to make those use? Do we have a, any type of a agreement with Mr. Bass that allows him to lease those for us?
Now, now, when I spoke with Mr. Bass, the, the answer to that question is, is no. Um, at, at least I haven't developed one with him. And when I spoke with him last week, week before last, he was not overly enthusiastic about providing that service for us. So that, that, that tells me that we're gonna have to handle it. If, if the board wants to move forward pronto, um, that we're gonna have to, to handle it within our existing system, which is going to, I mean, we've got the rental system for, um, the boat dock out there, but it's going to take some modification, uh, to put that in, in operation and, and just some figuring out how we're gonna handle it.
I think I need to add something on this topic. I can't remember how, who, somehow, I, my recollection is that I was supposed to talk to Mr. Bass informally about four or six weeks ago and see if he would be interested in overseeing with some kind of arrangement with the town since he had the campground next door, if he would incorporate possibly, uh, the rentals of, uh, his campground to include the town's, uh, few spaces that the town has. He was, um, uh, not cool at that time. Not cool meaning he was open to discussion, but I didn't have any authority to formally negotiate and finalize any agreement. And he didn't want to, uh, nor did I want to get into any final detailed discussions. And I ended the conversation with, where we'll get back to when the town decides what it wants to do formally. So, so Mr. Yu, you've talked with him about it since I have, but, um, uh, my understanding is that the spaces are ready to use. I mean, if somebody had a camper today, wanted to go there and hook it up-
Yes, sir.
They're usable. So you commissioners have to decide the parameters of who, what, and how you want to operate. And then if you want to talk to Mr. Bass, I'm sure he'll listen. I don't know, depending on what the, uh, particulars are, would probably dictate his amount of interest in possibly participating with the town. Or if he's not interested at this point, then as Mr. Yu was saying, you know, we've got the boat dock already set up. It's just that the commissioners, what you want to do.
Christie, have you got some input for us?
Yes, sir. What I was gonna say is, um, building on what David said, I, I think, do they have this sheet of paper? So I think in, um, some discussions with Mr. Bass, he provided figures of what he typically charges at his camp sites. And so in looking at a fee schedule, this would be something along the lines of being comparable to what he's doing based on his feedback. Um, so you guys would need to incorporate a fee schedule. Um, the way the boat dock works is that people can make a reservation, and they can come in and pay when they get here. But if they're coming in on the weekend, since the staff is not here on the weekend, um, or if they just opt to, they can use our, um, online system, pay with a credit card. It does charge them a 3% site fee, and we tell them that upfront. So when they did their rental, if they're paying by credit card over the weekend or at a different time, they would need to, um, know that they would get a 3% site fee added on to these fees. Um, it would take us some time. I did not set that up, and David didn't either. So we would have to have whoever set that up in, at the administration department work that out. And we would need a, a little bit of, a couple of weeks to figure out how to make sure that when you do sign up, that you're only going to the slot you're allotted. So if you're 50 amp, you're only going to a 50 amp. If you're a 30 amp, you're only going to a 30 amp, and you're going to the right spot that you're assigned. So the optimal thing is gonna be for them to pay Monday through Friday when there's someone in the office like the boat dock. But there is some concessions if people need to pay on the weekend.
Does this include, I'm looking at the rates now, it's the first time I've seen, does it include power?
This is, this is, this is the rate, and you hook up, and that's what it is.
All inclusive?
Yeah, that's, that's the one-stop shopping. And, uh, a little bit about that fee schedule. Um, this is my interpretation of what Mr. Bass's fee schedule is. And that's, um, based on, um, he told me that he charges $2,000 a month in July and the, the months preceding and after that, each month, there's a $200 increase or decrease. So as it goes through the summer, you know, through September, it drops down $200 all the way to December, down to a thousand, uh, January, excuse me, $800. His number was 750, but by doing $200, I couldn't get to 750 from 2,000. So thi- thi- this is my best attempt at mimicking what I understood Mr. Bass's fee schedule to be, that he gave to me verbally. And also for the daily rate, he told me he was gonna give it to, give me his fee schedule that he uses, but I haven't been in receipt of that. His daily rate is $90 a day in July, and the same, um, logic progression on fee dropping it or increasing it 10% uh, by month is, uh, i- i- is reflected in that one-day schedule. Point of notice there is that, uh, he only rents in increments of 30 days or one day. So if you, if you want to do two months, you gotta do a month at a time.
Uh, one thing needs to be clarified for those that are listening or may not understand. Mr. Bass rents only to campers that are self-sustained. There are no-
Ten.
That's right. There's no sleeping on a sleep bag, sleeping bag, or a canvas on the ground. But in other words, you got your own bathroom, your own shower facilities and everything, and what you bring in your camper?
I would, I would recommend that the town immediately put them up, rent them if they're ready to go. I mean, I, I can't see any reason not to do it, not keep it in the town's hands. That's just my two cents, so. You, you give it to somebody else, you know, they're gonna, if I was Gil or anybody else, I would want to cut, you know, to mess with it, so.
And I'm gonna use my spaces first. So what the, the, I guess, at this point here, we need to, can we just, do we need to make a motion again? What, Christie, that took to move forward, the town website or whatever?
Just, just reminding you of, I, I mean, I did, last December, when I put together the paper, I checked websites of local RV parks on the mainland, and the one closest to the island had a nightly rental range in the summer of 80 to 90 dollars a night. So this is all in the same ballpark. I, I don't see, I don't see the need to do a 10% reduction for June, July, August. Just pick a number like 85 dollars and charge it. Because it's in line with what another campsite had on their website last year. Um, I don't, I don't, I don't know, we need to complicate it more by having a different number every month. For nightly rates, nightly rates. However we want to do it, if it's a monthly rate, that's different.
Um, if, if I could share, Christie's in my conversation the other day. We were talking about, well, what we put forward is just a, a year's worth of what we estimated, um, it to be. It may be that you only want to go and do 90 to 100 day, 120 days at this point in time, and then revisit the fee schedule, uh, when we, when we, when we are a little bit more familiar with the operation up there. I mean, that's, that's what we were thinking. I mean, I'm okay with doing the, approving the whole thing, but it, it, it may not be exactly right, you know, but it's pretty close.
Having been in the rental business literally all my life, I would encourage you to consider how are you going to handle future reservations if you have a plan only for 90 days? So I, I think you're gonna be better served to consider this calendar year and, and then reload for next year.
Only take reservations to, through the end of December?
That, that's right, yeah, at whatever rate you said.
I'd like to, uh, move that we asked David to ask his staff to move forward on the, uh, rental of the campsite property as stated in the, uh, campsite rental rate table you gave us, as well as the, the food truck rate for the, the pier property.
Second. All right, discussion. I'd ask, uh, the staff with the concurrence of the commissioners, are those individual sites that we're talking about, are they numbered?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
We've got a big number, so nobody gets confused about where-
Very well numbered.
Okay.
And there's a maintenance, um, pit emptying service that we already employ that we will be taking care of business in between?
Same to carry sewer hookups.
Okay. Okay, that's even better.
Mr. Clemmons, are you prepared to have trash cans down there and that kind of thing for these campers? Somebody's gonna police the area and all that. I didn't mean that, is that bang, bang, I mean, pick up trash.
Are we moving in, Jeremy?
Any more discussion?
If-
Mr. Yu?
To the food truck daily rate, uh, matter, we had discussed that. Christie's got some other information that's not going to be counter to what the board has before you in terms of your motion second, but we have had dialogue on that. Could you bring them up to speed on?
Sure.
How we got to the 40, I think you should know that.
Yeah, just, just so the public knows and you guys know. So you guys voted on two food trucks with us adding, um, others that didn't make it into the packet as we could at the June meeting. The problem with that was, um, that was unforeseen at the time, is as we were trying to get those trucks in for the weekend, and, um, I was meeting on-site last week, the one company, um, Cruising Cuisine, sent an addendum that never made it to the board because it went to Heather Spam, and it was in time before the board meeting, but they had changed their fee that they were proposing to pay the town from $700 for the month, a month, to $700 for the whole season, which meant they were gonna be giving the town back $7 a day. That doesn't work. And then the other truck didn't outline a particular fee. What they said was 20% of net profit. But unless we're looking at their books or either trusting that they're a good person, we don't know what 20% of net profit is. So the way to approach this was to stop it for the weekend, have those folks on hold, and have you guys establish a set fee. Feedback on, it, it's hard to tell because some feedback is that just last week, as far as supply chain issues and cost, that I don't know the size that they buy it in, but like their cooking oil went from $18 to $65. And they're self-contained up there in the- Yeah, gallon. Yeah, and that they had to run from their generators they're running. They're not plugging in our electricity. And there's gonna be probably two on-site every day is what we're trying for. Some days may not have it based on their scheduling and their continued to schedule. But with all of that feedback, it seems like the target rate to start at is $40 a day. Because if they were there by themselves, they were thinking it would be somewhere around a $50 to $60 a day turn around to the town. But with two there, it seems like the fair thing for everybody to start with is around 40. So that's why we proposed that as the fee schedule.
I have a question in regards to the Patriot. Uh, the people that wanted to eat lunch by way of being buyers of the products and the food trucks, um, they pull up, they order their hot dog or hamburger or whatever. Where are they gonna park? Are they gonna have to pay, pay to park there while their food's cooking? If that, if that's the case, it's gonna be very difficult for those food truck people to, um, have the carpenters and the painters and all those guys. Not that that makes any difference, it's just something that, that's just the way it is, I guess, so.
I, I, yeah, I think, I know I envisioned that there would be some temporary spaces for people to come and wait while they're getting their food because a lot of the time, there won't be any parking places there. So you're asking people to come and not have any place to park, and that's, that's not gonna work. That then limits it to only walk-up, which, you know, walk-up from the neighborhood and the beach and things is, you know, I think it'll be, it'll work, but is there no place to put like two, you 10-minute parking places that are dedicated to people coming in and getting food? I, I, I mean, it, I, because I do envision the contractors and stuff being interested in this, and they're gonna need someplace to stick their vehicles briefly.
Yeah, and, and I think we're singing the same song, but at the same time too, if the town takes out two parking spaces, then we lose that income. So I don't know what the solution is, and again, we're singing the same song, so.
Would it, could we not just do it at a, you know, the noontime meal only? I mean, that would be the, that'd be when the construction guys would be the most likely to use those type. I mean, it's-
I, I, I don't know. When it's all said and done, if I had to make a decision, I'd say let's, let's go with it the way it's been discussed and see what happens.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know. I don't have a better solution.
We're, we're rolling this out. We can modify it later, I think.
Yeah.
Let's keep going.
If the parking lot's full and-
And the beach is full, they're gonna have some business.
And 300 or so houses across the road, trying to get something to eat or get to the beach. That potential is good there.
The $40 a day, I'm just, the, the first number I remember was the 700 a month, okay? And then you say that went to season. Um, $40 a day is 1,200 a month, which is a lot more than even the first, what we thought was their, their offer. You really think that $40 a month, people will do it? I, I just want to make sure we're not, we're not overpricing ourselves, that's all.
I do. I, I know at least one other that would do it. Um, and I think that otherwise, that, I don't, I don't think that really now any of them are gonna commit to being there every day, that they're gonna have to pay that 1,200, if that makes sense. Cause they've committed to some festivals and some other things. Um, so I, I think the way it should be is $40 a day, and they pay us on a weekly basis.
All right, you ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foe, say no, it's unanimous. All right.
Okay, uh, the next, uh, item is actually the, uh, the pier building itself. Uh, again, to the possibility of any grants such as the Golden Leaf Foundation or contacting those- people that have other grants that are available for the, uh, the building and the pier itself. They have to be involved from the beginning. So the beginning is to request an RFQ again and the permits and the, and also like to add the request for grants for the master plan for the, the pier building and the pier itself. I think we've got the parking lot and the campsites taken care of now. So this is for the building and, and the pier itself. Uh, whatever permitting we have to have from Tim, uh, what permits we have to have from, uh, as far as, again, I think that should be done, as you were talking about the Block Q, uh, Tim is also in, in, talking with him, that should be, again, something that is done in phases. I'm getting a nod, yes. So that is what I think that we need to do as far as moving, uh, forward on that so we can, uh, get, we, we don't need to wait, keep waiting, we need to get that out there and also find an engineering firm that can help us. And again, we will, as, as the board, look at this and, and when time permits, we'll have some public input as to what we will, uh, they can contact us and we will try to help them take, make their wishes known. Now, Mr. Duncan, David, what kind of motion?
Well, well, the, the question, the obvious question I have, why don't you make a solicitation for RFQ for both of those, both of those things?
Okay, then that has.
I mean, because the, it's the same type of, it's the same, although the pier is probably gone, I don't know, it may be more involved because it's a remodel, it's a remodel, but still, one, one solicitation for two different sites, instead of putting two different, two different RFQs out.
Can, can, okay, go ahead.
Now, I, when we were discussing all this last fall, one of the considerations was, depending on what needed to be done for the pier and pilings, we were probably gonna need a firm that is experienced in what comment was marine engineering. I wouldn't think that that would be the same type of qualifications to do Block Q and stormwater. I'm, I, I, I have been thinking all along, they're two separate RFQs. If we get one firm that happens to have branches that, you know, do the same, can do both and keep it in one firm, that would certainly come in and be clear when you got the two. But, I mean, that was my memory of last fall.
What, what, what I've, what's been my experience that, um, these engineering firms that do this type of work, they oftentimes sub out specialty work, um, for that kind of, for that very reason.
I, I guess I may be ahead of the game or behind the game.
Just as long as you in the game.
As long as I'm in the game. But my thing is, is that, uh, I wonder, unlike the, the Block Q, uh, we got fresh ground, we got, we got a empty slate or, you know, I mean, an open easel to paint the picture we want. At the camp, I mean, at the, at the pier, what we've got is an existing structure where we want to have, uh, future improvements that work well within the town. And we've already undertaken to, uh, to start some portions of that by, by looking for grants for some things we want. And everybody's had some input about what they want to see or not see there. My, my, my thoughts are that possibly we should have some sort of conceptual plan about what we want to see there before we put it out for an RFQ, or are we going to allow the engineer to, to dictate what we might want to see there? Like, I gave you an example, the park across the street had a conceptual plan that was put together in this room and then it was brought up to the planning department where we had, we then developed a plan that was then brought back and approved, and then of course we, we put it out there for those, for those things. Now, I'm not trying to make this a long, lengthy process, but I'm just curious, um, I know that the town would like to be in control of what we do there and what those may be or what we can have. And, um, so I'm just concerned that we don't have an empty canvas there and yet we all want to see certain things, uh, or the community may want to have certain things that we don't know what they are yet. So would it be better for us to have some type of idea of what we would like to see there as far as an amenity or as far as changes and then see how they work inside the system as it's laid out, uh, for, for construction? Or do we just want to put it out there for RFQ and then let the engineer run and take, and, and work with the engineer?
Can that not be done simultaneously, Tim?
It, it, it could, but I'm assuming that the, that the, when you put out there for qualifications, we're looking for someone who could do such a thing for us, uh, then you gotta make that decision if, if, you know, I mean, you're gonna get them, they're gonna come in and then you're gonna start telling them what you want and then they'll go out for requests for proposals, which is the commodity that David's talking about. But my thing is, is that, do we not have some idea of what we want to have happen there? Or are we going to, uh, for instance, when we did the lift stations, we knew we wanted to bring them out of the ground, we knew what we wanted to do, we then did our RFQ and then the RFQ presented proposals for the action that we wanted. In other words, we got different plans for bringing them out of the ground. Am I making sense? Does that make sense? So i- i- if we had nothing there, then we would have an RFQ, then we would tell them what we wanted and they would, they would bring it back to us. My concern is, is that, is that we're going to, for, for the, for the, a good example would be the many times I've discussed the value of the property is the value itself. And I think some of the commissioners understand what I'm saying about that, because we, we have a, we have a structure there that we can build upon and then we can approve upon without requiring a, a heavy cost to the taxpayers over, over a length of time. Because that's a plan. That's a plan that needs to be passed along to whoever the RFQ is. So I, I just think that needs to be considered.
I, I think that we can craft the, the RFQ, um, to include the development of a conceptual plan because the commissioners, um, in their, in their, uh, initial efforts at buying the pier, you basically had the fundamentals laid out in your plan. You have the things there identified that I think it can be, um, fairly easily woven into the, the effort by the, uh, firm selected to do that, to develop a conceptual plan. Um, but, but I just wanna say one thing here is that the engagement with the staff, um, as far as the, um, the interaction with whoever the board chooses to, is gonna be really important to the, to the effort at, at, uh, at crafting and putting a product together.
That, that does need to be worked simultaneously. Like you say, it's no need to get a, an engineering firm that's gonna design this when that is the furthest thing from our mind. I think the staff, I think we've talked to David and Tim enough that they know pretty much what our feelings are. Pat had a, a plan for the pier's development and I think this goes right in, like David said, we've given you enough information to, to, when you ask for the engineering, which it needs, again, Pat has her point, we need to either have two separate RFQs or one RFQ that is capable of taking care of both.
You know, we can even, uh, write into the language that a conceptual plan, a conceptual plan, um, uh, would be a deliverable brought back to the board before proceeding with other elements in the plan. I mean, that's, that's.
So I think we need to.
And that, you can kill two birds with one stone there by, um, you know, having that element of public participation in there too.
And, and, and just so that, I always understood as well that it's not, it's part of the purchase, but the lot that will be used for the public access is also part of this overall master plan because there was the concept of how that access could feed over to the, so let's not forget, it covers that access lot as well.
And, and that's what I was alluding to when I started talking, is that, that we've already started part of it, it's just not there, uh, and we need to have that. And I, I think David hit the nail on the head. It can be, we can make it part of, uh, because we've done that in the past, we can make it part of the RFQ, we have some idea of exactly where we want to go and, and I guess we do, we've had enough conversations that we can add that. But I guess I, I, I don't want to, to get too far into the weeds, but other to say that staff needs to have a hand in it to protect the citizens because of the investment that's been made there. Uh, because of, there is a inherent danger of overdevelopment there.
I think it's two for sure, but I think as long as it stays consistent with the pier plan that we put out and we've all visited the site enough and I think I'm pretty clear on what can and can't be done with that building and certain parts of it. So I don't see a problem with any of this.
And working with the staff, they've been, uh, very generous with their time and on telephone calls and trying to explain to a non-construction person what the, you know, the, the proper way to do this to get, as Tim would say, the, the best outcome. And I think, uh, with that, the motion needs to be that we request two RFQs, one for the pier itself, one for the pier building and that simultaneously the staff work with, uh, engineering firm to develop what our vision is for that. Okay?
Can I suggest that, that instead of specifying the pier building, that we use a general term for all of the built-upon environment so that we get everything instead of just one little rifle broken?
Well, that's just, Pat said about the ramp, so let's just call it the pier property.
All elements.
All elements of the pier property. Chris, I mean, Heather, do you?
Yeah.
And, and, and.
Yes.
I'm just gonna say, and likewise, my question about involvement of the Parks and Rec Board, um, does the Board of Commissioners want this to be a direct extension review since it's a separate RFQ than that over there? Do y'all want to drive the train on this one too?
Personally, I would prefer that we drive the train on this one as well. I mean, we, we do have, we kinda have an overall blend of people on the board, I think. And it's not that we won't ask the public's opinion, but I, I, and, and Parks and Rec, of course, is part of the public as well. They have thought, I, I would prefer to keep it with the board. I, board members can say that they prefer not to, that's fine.
First of all, but we just need to make sure that the public realizes that they need to, any, any suggestions they have or ideas, to make sure they're communicated with, with us commissioners. Uh, we do look and read every email. There's, uh, some are not qualified to answer because I don't know the, the correct answers, but we always, uh, taking into account what suggestions are given to us.
And part, we need a motion at this point.
I'd like to make a motion.
All right.
We request David to investigate two RFQs, one for the pier property, one for the pier per, structure itself, and again, uh, simultaneously work with staff on developing the engineering plan.
I, I might have confused myself on that. The two RFQs that we're talking about is one for the Block Q and one for the pier properties that's got everything on the pier associated with the pier covered. That's what, that's what you're talking about.
Yes.
Do you want to make another attempt at that? Or do you want to?
We've already done Block Q.
You already did Block Q.
This is for the pier properties.
But you're saying, because that's what, I understand that too, you want two RFQs at the pier?
One.
Okay, so then, yeah, we need to clarify the motion.
Please. One RFQ that covers the pier properties.
Gotcha.
All right. Everybody clear on the motion? We're looking for a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. It's unanimous. Next item is insurance, unless there's something I don't know about.
There's a, a little more I wanna, on, on the pier property.
Oh, okay.
If I could, uh, just, just a, a little bit more. Uh, and, and some of it, uh, I think we're gonna work on between now and our meeting on the twenty-first. Uh, some improvements to our handicap parking areas, uh, I think that is, is that gonna be handled, we wanna handle that at the meeting on the twenty-first?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna, probably, we'll probably put that, improvements to the handicap parking places, both, uh, at the east end of the beach, the middle of the beach and at the pier property, to make sure they're all meet standards. And the only other thing on the pier property is there's been a request to use the end of the pier, the third of July, for a fireworks show.
That's not on this agenda. That's not on this agenda.
Can we do it on the twenty-first? If we add to the agenda then?
That, anything can be added to the agenda for the twenty-first.
Good. And we will, uh, and I guess that finishes us up on the, the pier property for today.
Kind of thing I'd say is, if you're gonna make a motion that carries on the twenty-first, how you gonna get everything set and ready for the fourth?
Just per meeting, is that, how much time does that take, David?
Uh, I, this isn't my action item. That, that's not my action item, I'm not.
I'm not willing to discuss this at this meeting, it was not put on the agenda, okay? And in addition to a special meeting agenda does need consensus.
Okay.
I, this has come out of the blue, I am, I'm not willing to discuss it at this meeting. If you want to call another special meeting, specific to it, you can.
What I'm trying to do, commissioners, is to establish the fact that, as you just mentioned, that you may need to have another meeting, but my concern is, if you decide to go forward, somebody's gonna have to be in charge of it, somebody's gonna have to be contracted to do it, you know, all, all those things in your timeframe in front. So just keep that in mind, but point of order is well taken, we are at item number five on the agenda unless you've got something else about.
No, sir, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn, thank y'all very much.